I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Thank you. And that moves us to the adoption of the agenda. And I did have one change that I would like to initiate, and that is to move Mayor Council Matters, Item E, to the beginning of the meeting after the, make it Item B, after Item A on presentations and before oral communications.
During the hour, if you choose to do that, that's fine with me.
Okay, with that amendment, I move adoption of the agenda.
Excuse me, I'd like to add one more thing or a change. There was a typo in the public hearing for the housing element. It says to adopt the 2015 to 2022?
John, did it? 2008, eight.
And online it said 2055?
So, online it said 2055. I just wanted to note that it was 2022.
Okay. Ours is correct. It was just online that it's incorrect.
Madam Mayor, could I add one thing? It's just an announcement that'd take about 25 seconds for me to do.
And when, where would you like to do that?
After the Item B on the presentation.
Okay, so we'll do that afterwards for an announcement from Councilmember Conway.
Yeah.
That's fine with me.
Did you want to shift the library thing, or it's a person here, or what do you want to do about that?
You wanted to move new business item A before the public hearing item A?
Well, it's recommended, and here I just wanted, I assume it comes from you. So, is that what, you want to do that, or is the library person?
That would be fine.
Okay. With those amendments, I move adoption of the agenda.
All those in favor, or second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Sherry, you have an extra pen.
So, that moves us to presentation item A, which is the 2015 Wildlife Prevention and Readiness Activities.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Richard Johnson. I'm the Deputy Power Chief for Power Prevention and Services Bureau. This evening, I'm going to do a quick summary of the 2015 Brisbane Wildfire Prevention and Readiness Activities. We annually conduct three and have done so for quite some years. And those three events are the Weed Evacuation and Vegetation Management Program in the city, which includes the entire city. We then do a Fire Break and Wildfire Reduction Project up above Trinity. And lastly, we do a community awareness event. Now, the vegetation and weed management program is going to begin this year, and letters will be going out to the entire community beginning this Monday. Our first inspection on that program will come in May 1st, and then we'll continue on in that passion. Our second program is the Fire Break, what we call a Fire Break, which is a about 100-foot deep strip behind the homes at the end of Trinity Road, south through the intersection of King Road and San Mateo Lane. Now, that project is done in conjunction with Cal Fire Hand Crews, and it will begin on April 27th and run until completed. We expect about a week on that. And lastly, we have our annual emergency preparedness drill for the community wildlife evacuation. It's just a awareness drill in which we will do that on the third Saturday of June, which is June 20th. And that is tentatively scheduled for that date. If it changes, there will be a notice going out to the community in any rate on what that is. So, that is really my quick summary of our ongoing events for Brisbane Wildfires. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I always look forward to not getting the letter that we set out about not being in compliance. So, hopefully that happens again this year.
The community is very supportive and works very hard to assist us, so we thank them.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I was just going to ask you, you know, with the drought, are you seeing, you know, a reduced amount of material that's out there, or?
It's a little bit lower, but the timing of the few showers we had got a good start on some growth. We don't expect anything further, so don't delay waiting for the rain in case it may grow. So, you can cut now, and you're not going to have to worry too much about it regrowing. But it was probably about half or better than where it normally is, so it's pretty high, so.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And that moves us to our report from City Attorney Michael Rousch.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Earlier this year, there was a vacancy created on the Planning Commission, and one of the commissioners resigned. And due to that resignation, the council directed the city clerk to begin the recruitment process for a new commissioner. And as a result of that, she posted the proper notice concerning the vacancy and set April 15th as the deadline for submitting applications. Subsequent to that, the commissioner who had resigned from the Planning Commission requested to be reinstated, and the city council asked whether or not that person or any commissioner for that matter who resigned could be reinstated without the council's receiving applications from other interested parties, and/or whether that person could be reappointed without the council interviewing all persons who may submit applications. The council had, back in 2001, the council had adopted a handbook, and in that handbook, it set forth the procedures for making appointments and reappointments to commissions and committees. And in part, that policy provides that persons who want to be appointed must submit an application, but those procedures do not provide for a process to reinstate a commissioner who has resigned. There are certain government code sections, however, that are applicable to general law cities such as Brisbane that indicate what is supposed to happen when there is an unexpected or unscheduled vacancy on a commission. And basically, in that situation, a notice of vacancy is to be posted, which has happened here, and then the appointing authority here, the city council, shall make the final appointment to that notice, or to that vacancy. As a consequence, between the policy and the government code sections, the council is required to go ahead and have applications submitted. That process is underway. The deadline for that will close on April 15th. The information will then be reported to the city council by its April 16th meeting. There is not a requirement that the council then conduct interviews with respect to the applications that it has received. It could decide to make the appointment just based on the applications, or the council could follow its normal policy and set up interviews before it makes the appointment. That sets forth the procedures. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have about the policy or the procedure.
Thank you. Any members of the council have questions for staff?
No.
If that's, if that's what it is, then that's what it is.
And do we know how many applications we've received to date?
Yes, we received two. One from the person who had just resigned and one from a new, one who's never applied before.
Okay.
I would like to make one comment, and that is that we are eager to accept applications, and we invite all members of the public with an interest in this matter to apply. And I think that, speaking for myself, I want to keep an open mind as far as the applications that we do receive. So, that being said, thank you very much. And that brings us to Clerk Conway.
Yeah, I just wanted to announce that there's a replica of the Vietnam Memorial. It used to be called the Moving Wall, but it's called the Wall That Heals now. It's going to be in Golden Gate National Cemetery, which is in San Bruno, the National Cemetery. So, it's going around the United States, but it'll be there April 9th, 10th, and 11th, and it'll be open to visitors 24 hours a day for those three days, so. Anyway, I think it's, for those who've never had the opportunity to visit the memorial back in Washington, it'd be certainly worthwhile going and looking at the memorial wall, so. And so, if we could, maybe put it on our television site, the April 9th, 10th, and 11th, I think it's a real important part of history, and, you know, it's just those good things to do to honor the Vietnam veterans who perished in that war, and healing for those who lost loved ones or comrades during that time.
Thank you.
And Clerk, you said it's at the National Cemetery in San Bruno?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. April 9th, 10th, and 11th. I think it's coming in on the 8th, and it'll be set up, and then they're going to break it down on the 12th.
That's nice. And is that its only Bay Area appearance?
I believe so.
Well, thank you. So, that brings us to oral communications, number one, and I have one slip from Colleen Mackin.
Colleen Mackin, 161 San Bruno. And thank you for allowing me to address you. I'm also speaking on behalf of all the people at home who are on their TVs, who tell me that they're always on their TVs instead of being here. In my time attending these meetings over many years, they're getting longer. They're getting longer every single time. The agendas are longer, the things that are confronting the council are becoming more important. The agendas are getting longer in that process. I'm a wordy person, but I would really strongly suggest you consider, if you watch political debates where they have those nice little lights that go yellow, your time's almost up, red, your time's done, that you seriously consider, I know it sounds hokey and maybe a little ridiculous, but implementing that, put it right in front of the mayor, and that when you have those oral communications or you have a public hearing, limiting the amount of time. And you certainly have the prerogative as a council to say, this, you know, we can determine whether some issue deserves further time, but it's way too long. It's way, way, way too long. And in the interest of democracy, I'd like to see people interested. They're at home, jumping up and down, throwing things at the TV, but they won't come down here because they say it's too late. I don't want to be there past midnight. And I really feel sorry for all of you because you're trying to stay awake and alert, and seriously, I've been here where I'm almost falling asleep, and the rest of you to stay awake, alert, and make good decisions, and the poor city staff and coming to work the next day. It's way out of line. Either the agendas have to be trimmed or the discussion has to be. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen.
Could you just make one comment on that?
Of course you may.
Yeah, we do have a, actually a policy that guides the council on that, and it's kind of up to the mayor. You know, I had instituted it last year, and we have a five-minute level that the city clerk controls, and the lights are actually on here, and they're up on top of the podium. And our policy is five minutes per speaker, which is three minutes longer than anybody in a county, any city or the county of San Mateo. So, it's a good suggestion to probably start implementing.
It is.
Well, I'm just saying, I agree. I think it's, you know, as mayor, you know, when I was, when I was mayor, I didn't really abide by it. You know, it's, we've become lax as mayors. But I think the last meeting kind of, you know, kind of showed that, yeah, okay, yeah, when you're getting past midnight, we can be all tired and, yeah, and it lasts long. And then we didn't even get through things that were on the agenda, and people came and they stayed the whole time, and that was not fair to them. So, yes, I hope we do a little bit better job with that.
It would help if we, the mayor does get notices of who wants to speak on topics so that we can plan accordingly. We do have a long history of allowing people to have their say, and I think that that's important, and to have a good discussion on things. So, I do apologize when the meetings go long, but I do think that we are trying to serve the public and the community the best we can, and I will do my best to curtail, undo conversations in the future. So, thank you. And that brings us, any other members of the public like to speak on oral communications, number one? Seeing no slips, we will move on to the consent calendar. Does anyone have any motion to approve?
I actually, I had submitted some comments on item A, but they didn't quite all get in as I had, as I had thought, so I'd like to pull item A, the minutes from March 17th.
Okay.
I'd like to pull E and F for short comments.
Okay. So...
Approve B, C, and D?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Loria, on your...
So, these are the minutes of March 17th.
Mm-hmm.
And you all see I submitted some comments. The first one, just so the public knows, is under mid-year budget update and work plan, item A1. In the second-to-last paragraph, I've suggested adding, this is regarding the city attorney costs, that the council agreed that the matter would also be reviewed by the entire city council during the city attorney annual review. And then the other comment I had was on page three, when we're looking at additions to the work plan list. I had changed community choice energy to community choice aggregate. And then the, the one at the end, what I meant to put, it reads right now Garage Setback Ordinance and Ridge Line Ordinance Amendments, and it should read Parking Requirement and Garage Setback Ordinance, comma, and Ridge Line Ordinance. That's it.
I have no problem with adding that language to the minutes.
Fine with me.
So, do we have a motion to approve?
I'd just mention just one thing, just for information. It's true that the law and the past history has been community choice aggregation, but the people who are advocating this are starting to now call it community choice energy to make it more clear what it's about. So, kind of both names are out there, so it's not really a one or the other.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, right.
I think it's known pretty, it's known as a CCA, so...
Yeah, the acronym is certainly CCA.
Would it be helpful to have it CC as the Community Choice Aggregate slash Energy?
Yeah, I think that because it is being called both these days, so, not a big deal.
Okay.
With that, do we have a motion to?
Removed.
And a second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then item E, which is the city's Administration Service Director to execute the software agreement. You had a comment?
I had just two questions for our Administrative Services Director, just to get a sense of two things. One, I noticed that the contract would, you know, would seem fine, but it does start off with a five years, and then it's an annual renewal thereafter. And so, I guess my question is, is it never possible to get a longer-term agreement, or are we stuck with annual renewals thereafter, or what's the situation there?
This is what they, as Tyler, have for all of their clients. Trying to change that language would be an act of God. Because we have, we did talk about that portion, and they are not, they would not be, that's their language for how they want to. Because we talked more about the idea of it's got a 60-day cancellation notice, which is more of our concern. Because when we are with Corbin Willetts, who's our current provider, it's the same kind of idea, it's like every year we just renew. That's not really the big issue. My concern was more on the other side of it, where they would only give us 60 days' notice. But they assure me that they've never turned a client's money down. So, they, they won't cancel it. It's more of for us to be able to cancel it. So, no, they, that would be something that they, that would be for them, trying to change that at this point in time would be a deal breaker for them.
So, in a way, you're saying we don't have any choice, but it does seem as if it's kind of limiting going out into the future.
Yes.
But there's not much we can do about it, so...
Correct.
If we want this company, we have to fly with it.
Correct.
Okay.
We, we had that conversation for a period of time.
Okay, all right. That was my first question. My second question, it's not clear to me, the whole issue of how, all the information that's going to be up there in the cloud, particularly, you know, personal information from people who are doing online payments and so forth, the security issues and the potential of it being hacked if there's an issue, how are we, or are we protected against that in this contract?
Well, it would be stored on their server, so it would be through them, and they would be the ones responsible if it got hacked. So, they would be the ones responsible for providing the security. They're the ones who are responsible for ensuring, following whatever code, you know, whatever the law is for personal information being provided. So, that would be the protection that we as a city would have. Because it's on, it's on their servers, it's their, it's, they're the ones who are storing it. So, they're the ones who are responsible.
So, is it, is it clear, though, I guess this is kind of a contract question, that that situation is really the case, and that if there is a hacking or a breach of security that the city isn't liable in some way?
I'll, I'll look at it again. I mean, I, that was, you know, my, this is my, having talked, in my understanding, if it's not, if it's not perfectly clear, I'll talk to Michael, and we'll get language in there that makes it more clear. We also, as a city, have coverage through our joint powers agreement, joint powers insurance agreement, where we also are covered for personal information being distributed. So, we do, I mean, we also have coverage through our insurance. So, I'm comfortable with it, but we will check this, we'll check with Michael before we sign.
All right.
I have a couple of questions, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
So, you know, I'm glad that we're moving towards a cloud-based product. In the staff report, you talk about that the advantage is that the upfront costs are lower, but I didn't see anywhere in the staff report about, you know, what would be the upfront cost if we did it in-house as opposed to doing it with these guys?
The cost of, the cost, if the city was to purchase the system and place it on our own servers, the cost would be about $120,000, and that, plus the cost of travel expenses.
Okay, that's right. Okay, so, okay, so that $120,000, okay, so that, that's if we had the in-house product.
Correct.
Okay. And then, and then maintenance would be about $20,000.
Correct. So, currently, you know, with the, doing it on the cloud, the upfront cost, you know, the cost of implementation is $86,000, so we save about $34,000 by doing it on the cloud, you know, doing it in the cloud, plus the fact that we don't need to buy our own servers, we don't need to up, you know, do upkeep on our own servers. When they have, when they send out a patch, we wouldn't, we don't have to have the people, our staff doing the patches, we don't have to have the staff installing new software as it gets updated. So, there's an ongoing savings because that all happens with them on the cloud. There is an addition, you know, the cost, if we were to do it, so we save $34,000 upfront, but it does cost us about $15,000 more every year to have a cloud solution. But with the cloud solution, you know, we're using their encryption software for, as Ray was talking about, for the, you know, for personal information that's kept on the servers, whereas if it was on our servers, it would be our responsibility for following all the, all the codes and the laws regarding keeping of personal information. Now, we don't have to, that's the responsibility of Tyler. We also don't have to keep buying new servers as they upgrade their software if it doesn't run on our server, we would have to buy a new one. We don't have to keep up to date on the latest OS for servers, because they, that's all those things that they will be doing by having it on the cloud. And then, you know, obviously, the biggest issue is if there was a localized disaster here, we would not be able, you know, we may have a difficulty getting any financial information out or being able to do checks.
Sure.
Whereas if it's on the cloud, we can hook up a computer and a printer anywhere.
There's no disruption.
And be able to get it. As I said, they have two different locations right now, one in Texas and one in Maine, and they are looking at putting a third one, I think it was, and I know we talked about, I think it was in Colorado. And then I think that's what they said. I'm looking at Ray because he might have a better memory on that. memory on that one than I do.
That's the new location?
Or Kansas, something, they're doing the third location.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, it sounds like there's these other savings, you know, that you can't really put down, but, yeah, no, it sounds like it's a much better route to take. And then, you know, just in regards to Tyler, are there any cities in San Mateo County that are using Tyler?
I don't know of any, you know, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. We have a, you know, we've got a list of their references, we have a list of those other clients, and they have a very large installation within California. They are one of the major, small, smaller city, mid, small to mid-sized cities installations.
All right, good. All right, thank you.
Laurie?
So where is the, in our, with our current system, you say we have our own servers, so do we have it back, the information backed up anywhere if there were to be an event? Where is that?
We back it up on tape, and then we take the tape offsite within the city of Brisbane.
So it's all within Brisbane?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds like a good move, then.
Yes, it does.
Move it out of state.
Stuart, I was just curious, what are we currently paying on maintenance fees on the Corbin Willetts system?
We're doing about $20,000 right now.
$20,000 a year? Is that kind of increasing a little bit, but that'd be made up with efficiency, I'm assuming?
You know, there might be some efficiencies. You know, one of the challenges that we have with Corbin Willetts is that, you know, we are one of their few remaining city clients. They've gone very much into the tribal soft, financial software. So, you know, when you, as council, adopted the new rate structure for the water and sewer with the new service charge, we gave them, you know, we told them three months before we needed the information that we were doing it. Deborah was working overtime the night before the bill was going out to make sure that it was updated correctly. I mean, they're, Corbin Willetts has really gone away from keeping their software up to date. They are not taking advantage of a lot of the window-based applications that Tyler does. Their ability to do reporting is not the same, and for, as I said, for cities are just not, don't really have enough of an install base to keep it going. Whereas Tyler is a nationwide software system, so they have every, you know, need to keep it up to date. So I, we'll get some efficiencies, but I don't know if we're going to get $15,000 worth of efficiencies, but, you know, again, it's on our server. Anytime that there's an update, you know, and we get the new tax tables, Albert has to install the new tax table, so that happens every year. If there's a patch that they're doing, that has, Albert has to install that personally, whereas when it's on the cloud, that won't happen. They'll do that, all those things automatically for us.
And plus, we won't have to pay for our own servers, I think.
Right.
You had told me that was three to five.
You know, $5,000 to $10,000 for the servers, depending on what, you know, what we need to do, and, you know, servers go, you know, we need to replace servers every three to, you know, five years. So, you know, that will be a, you know, that will be a savings as well for us.
Thank you. So with that, do we have a motion to approve item E?
Yeah, I also moved the.
Second.
The administrative services director to execute the service agreement with Tyler Technologies.
Second.
A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And then on item F?
Yeah, I had one small suggestion, which I talked earlier with the city manager about, and I don't know whether it's had a chance to talk with the planning director, I'm sure he has. But I had one small suggestion that I felt would communicate to the public that, you know, this endeavor is really an EIR that's under the control of the city, even though, of course, it's totally done by the environmental consultants, but it's still under our control, they're working for us, and reimbursed by recology. And so, my suggestion for making that clear, rather than have a meeting that's run 100% by the environmental consultant, I suggested that we have a meeting that essentially is sort of sponsored by the city, and that the mayor starts it off and introduces the environmental consultant, who would then say, okay, you know, this is the scoping meeting, this is what it's all about, this is why we're doing this, and what the EIR will do, and so forth. So, council would just be in the audience, we wouldn't really be, you know, up here on the dais, accepting comments and so forth, and get involved in that, which was a problem, as I've heard, and you probably all experienced, probably Clark experienced it in the previous time, when everything came to the council, it got very convoluted, and people were all mixed up between the EIR and the project and so forth. We want to make it clear that we're just talking about the EIR, and we're just talking about the scope of things that are going to be studied, you know, and that's what Mr. Zola does very well. But I did think it would be nice that it's clear that, you know, he's working for the city, and the symbolic way to do that is just have him introduced by the mayor. And so that requires a very slight little change in the language here, and that was my only suggestion. So, you still okay with that, with it, Clay? Talked with John, everything's okay with that?
Yeah, I don't know if the city attorney wanted to add anything to that. I know that Michael and John and I talked about, I think generally speaking, that probably should, should work. It's somewhat similar to the way we handled the EIR training sessions.
Right.
A couple of years ago. So I think that worked relatively well. I don't know if Michael wanted to add anything.
The only, the only thing that I had voiced to the city manager and the planning director concerning, not just that the mayor would introduce the item, but the way that the Brown Act reads is that if there is a, a meeting that is discussing a matter of local concern, which this certainly is, and that a, that if a majority of the council may attend, which in this case may be the fact, we would have to notice the meeting as a city council meeting, but we will, you know, we will indicate on the agenda that it is not, you know, it's not going to be the regular kind of city council meeting, we have to notice it because the Brown Act requires it. You know, it's not going to be a matter where the council is going to be involved in the discussion of the item, but just, just so you know that, that we will notice it as a meeting, because the Brown Act requires it under the circumstances where it is likely that a majority of you may be physically present at that meeting. So that was my only caveat to the whole process, and it had really nothing to do with the mayor introducing it, it was just, when it came to my attention, that it was likely that three or more of you may come, then we need to just take care of that little procedural issue.
Okay.
That's fine. And can we have that meeting televised, or like we do with our council meetings, so that people can watch it on TV, or watch it later?
It depends on where it's at. We were thinking that it'd be at Mission Blue. Obviously, to televise it, it would have to be in the council chambers, and it's not, I guess we can do that, it's a little bit awkward. I'm not sure the cameras are all that great when we're having somebody speaking out here, and.
It would just be a general, you'd almost be able to hear the voices and maybe the discussion, and possibly the speaker if there was, if that was a format that was.
I mean, maybe for those of you who have been at these types of meetings before, you can, you know, opine on whether it's helpful to have it videotaped or not. I just know that that's kind of customary with what we do. People tend to watch from home. And it did say in the materials that, you know, there would be no court reporter unless we wanted one, so, you know, it would be a good way for us to just have it documented what happens.
Yeah, right. That makes sense to me.
Yeah, I don't vouch for the call.
But we don't need to do, you know, a full council kind of thing, because really, all you have is people coming up and giving testimony. And the people who really care about that testimony is, are the environmental consultants, of course.
So it's helpful for them as well?
Yeah, sure.
Would it be difficult for the consultants to be at the dais, and we handle it, the notice, like we would a workshop? Where we're noticing a workshop or a scoping? Or does this make it more complicated?
I think it probably makes it more complicated. I mean, what, if we're going to do it in this room, we'll do our best to film it in a way that, you know, works for people. I'm just, you know, we have, we have a camera system in this room, and we have a structure in this room, and so anytime you get away from that, you know, the quality is probably going to, going to suffer a little bit, but we'll do our best.
I have a question.
Sure.
It's always. Like enough.
All right, so what you're requesting, Ray, is an additional meeting?
No.
This would be the scoping meeting.
Okay.
Just to make it clear that it's a city-sponsored effort, that's all.
Got it, got it. And that would be rolled into this overall price that recology is.
Wouldn't change anything.
Covering.
Yeah, it's not going to change anything, and as far as attendance by the council, I don't think we would be structuring it in a manner in which there would be a roll call.
No, no, it'd be up to each individual.
Yeah, you don't have to be here. You know, that's, that's an individual choice.
Okay, good, good, good. And then, you know, in regards to that reimbursement agreement, is that something that would be available at the, so the public can see that and feel comfortable, yes, the city is, has this agreement in place? How does that, how would that work?
Sure, I mean, we can put that even on our website if, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Sure.
Thanks.
And then one addition, it comes up later in our council mail, mayor matters, but we did receive a letter from Camilia Valamirova regarding this item, and she's concerned with the water usage, and I think that the, for the recology project, and I think that's one of the things that would be studied in an EIR, so that's something that, I just wanted to acknowledge that we did receive that, and I would assume that those questions will be answered through this study. Correct.
Yeah, no, I think that, I'll confer with our environmental consultants, but it's my understanding that the kind of letter that she wrote is really what should be submitted at a scoping session. This is the kind of thing that I think, or whatever anybody thinks, or agency thinks, you know, ought to be a scope of the study, and that's what it's for, right? Okay?
Kind of hard to imagine this day and age not studying water in an environmental document.
Yeah, but.
So, yeah, it'll be.
Needs to be recognized, so people are comfortable that, you know, it's all there.
Yes. Did you have a question?
I did, I had a quibble. Ray, I'm good with your suggestion, so I'm fine with that, so, methodology. Mine is, is my verbiage, city attorney's signature on, that I reviewed this. You did review it, correct? I mean, you helped craft it, but the last time I brought this up, Clay assured me that we will have the signature on there, and yet it's not there, so hopefully, moving forward, we can kind of tidy that up, because I will catch it every time.
And.
That's it.
I just wanted to note, I already told staff this, but on page 18, there's a typo for the project schedule. It says, based on a mid-November start date, and that should be revised to be April, to comport with the schedule below it. On page 18.
I'm not finding the page numbers.
The page numbers are at the top right corner.
What page?
18.
18?
Oh, okay.
Project schedule, so it says at the end of that paragraph, based on a mid-November start date, and that should be April.
Yeah, that all has to be adjusted.
Must have been written at an earlier date.
Yeah, right. Things change.
And perhaps.
April.
And, and it says that later in the actual table. Right. Any other questions for staff or discussion?
The motion to approve item F, authorizing the mayor to execute a consultant agreement with Metis Environmental Group.
With minor modifications.
Yes.
But second that in.
Yeah.
And do I have a second?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So that brings us to item A in new business, which we're moving forward in front of the public hearing, which is to consider the selection process and funding for architectural services for proposed new library project, and creation of a library planning stakeholder group. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Portem, council members, nice to see you again. As you know, we are here to discuss the selection process for a library architect. This is a follow-on to your meeting of February 5th, when you received an outstanding report from city manager Holstein, and that night, you gave us guidance, and you selected a site on Visitation Avenue. You also accepted a proposed financing plan, the library staff's building plan, and you directed staff to begin the development of this request for proposal process that we've got for you this evening. So here are the steps that staff's proposing. The first thing we think that we ought to do is publish a request for statements of qualifications and letters of interest, and SOQ is a very standard form, the American Institute of Architects have them, that's all I think we need from architects at this point, but staff would propose that we're going to list out some requirements that we want the architects to tell us, you know, demonstrate to us that you've worked in San Mateo County, demonstrate to us that you've worked on infill sites, demonstrate to us that you've worked on building a library of the size that we have identified in the building plan. We would then propose that staff shortlist that down to a firm of two to three people, two to three firms that we would like to further interview. In parallel with that, we would suggest that the council consider establishing a library stakeholder group, and you'll see on page two of your staff report, we've got a list of the recommended parties to it. Right now, it has seven people, not including the staff members who would be on it, so it's a fairly robust group, but I think considering the very many people that are interested in this, that's a reasonable number, but we're certainly interested in hearing your input for other people that ought to be added to this. Also, staff would be developing a formal request for proposals for the architect and engineering services, that would then be given to the shortlisted firms. And again, you may wish to give us some specific input, if there's things that you want on there, I'm happy to take those on board tonight before I, before I go off and start writing the RFP. Then the process starts to get a little bit different, because one of the things that I think we really need to do is to invite the shortlisted firms to come in and meet with the stakeholder group, and give each of them an opportunity, say up to an hour, to talk to the stakeholder group and really understand what it is they're looking for. This would be so that these architectural firms can put together their very best proposal, and they're not guessing, they're not trying to understand what it is you might want, or trying to figure out who people, really allow them some back-and-forth conversation to do that. Then they would submit the RFPs, they would submit those to the stakeholder group, the stakeholder group would make its recommendation, and the recommended architectural engineering firm would come forth and make a presentation to the council. One of the other things that I've got in here that's not standard in every RFP that we would put out is that I've recommended we establish a budget of $5,000 to $10,000 for each of the shortlisted firms, and the reason for that is I'm anticipating that our RFP is going to specify a very robust presentation. We're going to expect a higher level of drawings and details and sections that we normally don't require. Oftentimes, proposals are some, something of a beauty contest, they end up getting us the architect or the engineer who's the best at responding to proposals, not necessarily the person who has developed the best understanding of who we are as a community and what it is we're looking for. So that's why I'm thinking we ought to tell these people upfront that, look, if we shortlist you, we're going to pay you for some of your effort. Certainly, $5,000 to $10,000 is not going to fully compensate them anywhere near for all of their effort, but it's going to give them something, so they, they recognize that we're very serious about this, we're very serious about our partnership, we want to pay you for some of that work effort upfront. So, the only other comment I want to make now is that, I have previously shown this to the facility subcommittee, they reviewed it, they, they were generally in consensus with this. There are a couple of items on here that we haven't fully addressed yet, that we have to work out. One of them, of course, is that if and when, and I'm hoping it's when, that we build a new library, we're going to have 2,400 square feet of open space when we move out of the second floor of the existing building, so there's a conversation about what to do with that. I think there's also a conversation that we need to have about the express desire to have an artifact room. As of, as of now, we've said, the library folks have told us, all right, we think, and I know they think they wanted more, but they think, okay, we can, we can program your library, 5,000 square feet, we'd like another 1,500 square feet of interior space for workshop type things, and we'd like a 500-square-foot outside space for garden. I don't think anywhere in that, we've talked about space carved out for an artifact area. So if we want place for our historical artifacts, we're going to have to figure out what that means, and you. And you just have to, we all have to realize that as we go along and budget, every square foot is approximately $500 a square foot. So we've gotta put it in there, we've gotta fit it in there. And I hope that we'll have that conversation with the architects as we're coming along, so that they'll give us a sense of, okay, here's what we think, a community of your size, this is the type of, of square footage that makes sense for you. And then we can have that debate as we go on with them. So with that, I'm happy to take questions, I'm happy to take input, and I'm gonna turn my iPad over to the notes section, so I can write down what you're telling me.
Laurie, do you wanna?
Sure, sure. So I, since I'm the, I'm on the library JPA board, I took a, an opportunity to go down to Portola Valley and visit their library, which is approximately the same size, I think it's 5,000 to 7,000 square feet. And they have a history or artifacts room, which was, had a table, and it had a lot of, you know, book, bookcases and, you know, shelving around it where, and wall space where, you know, artifacts were displayed, but there was a table where somebody was sitting and actually using that space as if it were just part of the library. So it had a dual use, which I thought was nice. So, you know, I'm excited about having that space. I think that it would be good to, to move what we have currently sitting in storage in City Hall and have it on display. And, you know, people are often interested in looking at the history of Brisbane. I'm sure we have, you know, lots of artifacts that we could put there. And I, you know, I've read the, the building plan for the library. I, I agree, you know, 5,000 square feet plus the 1,500 square feet for the community space, plus the 500 for the garden. That's, that sounds like a good plan. So I do wanna note, though, that, that additional cost, I had asked Randy if that was included in the financing plan, the additional cost for the, paying these, you know, consultants to do the, the, you know, the RFP process. And that would be, if there's a couple of firms, it would be about $10,000 to $30,000. And that's not yet included in the proposed financing plan. But it sounds like something that, you know, given our situation, you know, that we wanna find firms that will provide a good product that fits our community, it sounds like that, that's a good plan. So, but we just need to be mindful of the cost. So, so I'm, I'm in favor of what, what Randy suggested.
I have some questions. Or, I don't know, I mean, you, this way, I don't know.
I was looking to see if.
Clark and I are a subcommittee, so go ahead.
I always wanted to speak next, but I'm just gonna go down the line, so.
Okay.
Clark, if you'd like to.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm on the subcommittee making the recommendations, so I don't have much to add to it, other than that I, I certainly take Randy's suggestion in regards to providing some monies to the potential architects to get the best possible product we can get, you know, competition-wise, so I think that's a great suggestion. And we'll figure out down the road how ad hoc committee would come together, so. And I certainly agree with that, too, 'cause you want community involvement in this, 'cause the library is really kinda, you know, you know, City Hall's supposed to be the center of the city. Library kind of, a lot of things evolve around that. People don't come in and visit in City Hall that much, right?
Sure.
Usually come here for business, and that's it.
Especially its location, you know, being right in the center of visitation.
Yeah.
It'll definitely be that percenter of, center of, of visitation. Oh, yeah, that's all.
That's it.
Would you like to?
Yeah, thank you, Honorable Mayor. So, yeah, great presentation, Randy. Let's see. So last time we were talking about the additional space. So I, I thought it was at 2,000 square feet. Now, it says here 1,500, and then the 500 for the park space.
That's how it's specified in the building plan, sir. It's a total of 2,000 square feet, but 1,500 of it is interior space, 500 is an exterior seating space.
Okay. And then that, that, I know we got the $500 per square foot. Do you still feel like that, that outdoor space is, is still gonna be at 500?
Oh, no, 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 sir. I, I don't think that's gonna be at $500. That's, you know, call it $20 a square foot. You know, if you were just planting a couple of flowers, it'd be four bucks. It's, it's a matter of how involved you wanna get in. I guess kind of if I had to design it off the top of my head, I'd say, take the existing deck that we already have out there and sort of repurpose that. I think that, that, that excites me, but that may not excite everyone else on the stakeholder group. That's more a personal opinion, I'm not an architect. So I think it's, it's for the architects to work with and propose, it's for the stakeholder group to come up with what they think ends up looking best.
Yeah, no, for sure. So here we have this artifact space. Based on the, the location, could we have 2,000 square feet of additional space above the proposed library, and, you know, so we could accommodate that?
So make it a two-story building?
So, so the 1,500 square feet, wouldn't that be on the second story, or is that all single-story?
So right now, everything's planned to be single-story.
Really? Okay, so 5,000 for the library, and then 1,500 for that additional maker space, and whatever, you know, we all decide.
It's an 11,000-square-foot-plus lot right now, sir, so.
Okay. All right, so if, if you were to carve out, say, an additional 500 square feet for this artifact space, you'd have to go to another story?
I don't think so. I, I don't think so. I think we could, it starts to come down to a question of what you wanna do, the circulation, that's probably what worries me more. I, I don't, it would certainly be desirable, I think, to have some on-site parking there. I don't know how much of that we're gonna be able to have, but certainly having truck-delivery space, you know, particularly with the, the circulation that the library does, interlibrary, you know, the, the loans that they do. You've gotta have a way to get in, and we've gotta figure out siding of the building and all of that. So it's hard for me to say right now. Kind of in my mind, I have a layout of where I think the building probably ought to go. I can see which way it orients best to the sun, but that's not the perfect alignment with the street. So again, that's why I'm really looking for an architect firm to come onboard and say, no, 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 that's not how you wanna do this, we've done that before, and, and let them figure it out. But I don't think we're, I don't think we've yet approached the point that you'd have to go two stories.
Okay, good, good, good.
If I could just interject, I think on the building plan, it actually does recommend a two-story building. On the last page, it says it would be a two-story building with total 7,000 feet. The main floor would be the essential library space, and the upper floor would be the community space and the outdoor garden.
I can explain that.
Okay.
The, the reason they, they approached it from that perspective is that, at the time, we were looking at potentially smaller sites than the Five Stars LT Clark site.
Okay.
So that's, that's why they got to the second floor. But, you know, this is all design issues, you know, that we'll get to, you know, when we, when we get an architect onboard and decide. I, you know, I think we need to be kind of up at the 30,000-foot level at this point. I mean, we just don't know how we wanna do this. But the nice thing is we got a really large site, so we have space to work with.
And I think preferentially, in multiple conversations with the library staff, they've told us that they really prefer a single-story. It just, it helps, particularly with the modern design of libraries, where things aren't just blocked off, they tend to be long-term view. It helps with their site views, and it helps with them being able to keep a smaller number of staff. When you go to two stories, they absolutely have to increase their staffing, and that just adds to the cost of it.
Got it, got it, okay. And then, you know, I'm glad that you mentioned the, the old library space. You know, I mean, eventually, you know, that will be the old library space. And, and I, I would hope that we do a parallel track, that we, as, as we're planning for the new library, that we really, you know, think about what we could do with that space, so that when the new library opens up, that the new space, the new something that's gonna be in that space is opening up at the same time, so that we don't have, we're trading one vacant building for, for another. So, and then, you know, I, you know, I really liked how we did the, the scheduling format for the skate park, and we had the, the little bubbles, and I would love to be able to do that again.
It's a storage specialty.
Yeah, no, I think that's great, because what it does is that, I think it helps us keep, stay on track. It also is good for the community to understand, okay, yeah, no, we are addressing these things, and we are gonna see it through. And then you could check those things off. And so, I don't know what kind of little cute icon we'd have at the end.
A book?
But.
We'll see. We gotta get Stuart to share his software.
Yeah, for sure.
I'm just gonna leave all comments about bubbleheads off. I'm more of a bobblehead guy, kinda thing.
And, yeah, and then, you know, and lastly, you know, I did, I, I like the, the structure, the kind of, you know, the participants for that advisory group. So it makes sense to me. Were you expecting, Randy, for us to decide, like, which council member should?
No, sir, I was just offering an opportunity for you to say, am I close here, or am I way off track? Does this, does this start to feel right? Is, are we getting the right people represented here? Not to make a decision on that tonight, but just to kind of make sure that we've got the constituency and the makeup of the group right.
All right.
And I just wanna point out that I had asked for best PTO to be added onto that list. They weren't previously on there, but I think it makes sense to have, you know, the, the fundraising arm of the school district, you know, in sync with this and onboard, so that they can hopefully coordinate on some fundraising to help, you know, potentially, you know, pay for this. You know, obviously, we have a financing plan, but the, the more funds that can be raised, the more people get excited about it. And if you, you know, go down to the Melbury Library, you see they have like a, a donor wall inside their library where they have, it looks like a, like a virtual library painted onto the wall with books, with people's names on it who donated. So something like that, I thought, would be nice, that best PTO could work on. And being the, you'd ask Cliff, you know, which, which of us would like to serve, I, you know, I would be interested, given that I'm the library JPA board member. I'm excited about the library.
Yeah, no, I know, you are.
Just, just on that point, I mean, I guess I kinda made an assumption that that would be the case.
Yes.
And I think, because I think it's very important. It's on.
You're just not close.
Okay. It, it's, I think, gonna be very important that the council's representative on the JPA board be involved in this as the councilperson, 'cause there's gonna be coordination through the JPA, there's funds available through the JPA, and it just, it just make, gonna make it a lot more seamless to, to do it that way.
That, that makes sense to me, so.
I'm not speaking on Lori's behalf.
I, I know, but it.
It just happens to be your appointee.
It does make sense, right? That, you know, that's who we have decided is going to represent the council in library matters, and so it seems like the person that should do it. But again, I know you guys have been on the facilities.
Well, no, no, it's, it's gonna come back to the facility subcommittee at some point, so, I mean, it's kinda interesting on just the dynamics of how that'll work, right?
Yeah, well, well, we're, it's part of Cliff's bubble diagrams we're gonna have to get, but, I mean, there's different pieces to this. JPA is a piece of it, and it's our own kind of internal processes are pieces to it, so. And obviously, every major decision's gonna come back to the full council.
Right.
Right?
I, I just wanted to add that, you know, it's, it's in our report, but also, you mentioned Cliff, and that is that, you know, we do wanna sort of plan together the, the new library and, and the new location, but also, so what's gonna happen, that the space is gonna be vacated. And, you know, maybe that might be part of the, of the community space we're talking about, and make that building, you know, a, a larger, you know, community center with, you know, more facilities. But I think the, the key timing thing, and which is one of the reasons that we, we like the Five Star Cafe site, was that, you know, we can build a new library there, and the old library's still functioning. And then, when the new library's ready to go, then they move across the street, in effect. And that's the time, probably, then, that we'll do whatever we wanna decide to do in this process to the second floor that's been vacated, you know, by its current configuration, you know, which, as we all know, is way out of date.
So the only comment that I would like to make on this whole process is that I've seen some of the other libraries that have been built in the, in the Bay Area, and, you know, it's, it's fabulous that we're moving forward and looking at what we can do and, and how we can best utilize the space we have with the budget we have. But I think that my request to you would be, in your request for proposals, that we are very clear that we don't have an unlimited budget, and that when we do ask for architectural renderings of what's possible with the space, that budget concerns and construction costs are addressed before it gets to be the, boy, we want more, we want bigger, we want, you know, and, and one of those things is coming up to the second story, where you have to be, you know, disability accessible, and, you know, it, it brings in a lot more construction costs. So I do want to hope that the public and the people on the stakeholders group and the architects are aware that there is budgetary constraints on funding this. We probably aren't going to get as much Measure A funds or library funds as we would like, and so it is something that I just think should be made aware of from the get-go.
Yes, ma'am. I'll be sure to put it in there.
That, that's a strong motivation for myself, anyway.
You know, and just, just, you know, piggybacking on that, do we have an update on any Measure A application, how, how we're doing with that?
Yeah, I have an update as of today. So I was in contact with Supervisor Tessier. Our, our request is basically in a, in a pot of money, for lack of a better term, that is more or less under her discretion. Now, she's got a lot of competing projects in the county, or in the, in her district, I should say. And what she told me today was that it's, it's too early to say for sure, but that she is, you know, still supportive of our project, but, you know, she hasn't made any commitment as to whether or not she would recommend to the board funding out of, out of the allocation that, that she's been kind of designated. As I understand their process, the each supervisor was given a certain amount of dollars to, to allocate within their district. So that's, that's the pot of money that we're competing for at this point.
Okay. Yeah, I, I know there was, I guess, perhaps, you know, an option that, that not getting the lump sum in one year, but spreading it out over several years.
I, I have, I have reemphasized that to her today, that, you know, that we are certainly open to a, a schedule of money. It doesn't all have to be in one year, 'cause we're not gonna, if, if we can get this designed in the fiscal 2015, 16, and under construction sometime in 16 or early 17, I mean, that's probably a pretty good schedule. So certainly, we could take the dollars over a couple-year period of time. And, you know, we're, we, we put in a request for a million dollars, you know, I, that would be great if we got that, and as I think the mayor suggested, we may not get all of that. So, you know, but if, whatever we can get, certainly will add to our ability to do a good project.
Sure. All right.
Keep your fingers crossed.
Keep your fingers crossed.
At some point, you maybe wanna make a phone call.
Yes, Ray, I was, yeah.
Yeah, just another budgetary thing, and that is the suggestion that we, you know, put aside some money for the finalist architects, so they could really spend some time and effort giving us something that we can really bite into. The timing on that, you know, are we wanting to do that as kind of a added supplement to the budget for this year, or are we talking about building it into the budget for next year, or, so what's the timing?
Well, I hadn't really given a ton of consideration in that, sir, for two reasons, no, because it's a fairly modest amount of money that we're talking about compared to the overall design budget. And also, I wanted to get a sense from the council that I was on track first. So now that I feel like I've gotten very good input from you all, I can start to put that schedule together, and I can develop that timing.
Because my, my thought on that is that if there's one project that a lot of people are really interested in, I mean, when you go around, you talk to people, almost always a library comes up. I mean, that's kind of top of the list for the general citizen out there. So I think, you know, the more we can sort of expedite it.
I agree.
Thank you. I, I think that's actually the guidance the city manager's given me as well, sir, that this is a very important project.
So are there any members of the public who would like to address the council on this matter? Seeing no requests, are we?
Does this require a motion, or are you kind of clear on what you want to do?
I am very clear, sir. Thank you all for your comments. This is great input.
Okay. So something we don't need to vote on, and actually, we're all probably in agreement. So thank you.
Madam Mayor, could we take a five-minute break, please?
Of course.
Yeah, thank you. Probably give some folks a allow them to duck out the door, too. And then...